I'll call the meetings ordered. Roll call, please.
Mayor Breagan.
Here.
Mayor Congressman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davey.
Here.
Councilman Hecking.
Here.
Councilman Republican Cord.
Here.
Madam President, thank you.
At this time, I would invite Pastor John Lopez from the First Baptist Church to lead us in the implication.
I have a follower before me, Lord, asking if you'd be with us meeting. Lord, if there's those that are here this evening that have something to say, I just pray that you give them the right words. Help them to say it in the right way with clarity and help them to say it in a kind way as well. I pray for the decisions that will be made this evening. For those that are involved with the decision-making process, I just ask that you be with him. Give him sound reasoning and help him during this time. Lord, we thank you for who you are, for what you have done for us, and for your many blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing as Councilman Smith leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we will review the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or have that item removed. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have anything from the consent agenda removed?
District 5, item seven.
Okay. Counsel?
Motion to approve consent with item... Did you have something to report?
Did you say something?
Did you want to have something removed from the consent agenda?
I wanted to discuss a point under law. Is this the period to do it?
No.
In a minute.
Huh?
In a few minutes.
Let me get to the audience. Okay. You made a motion?
Motion to approve consent with item seven.
You have a second?
All seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the record show, it was a five-zero vote. Audience orally written communications.
My name is George Sandy. Twenty-three-year-old resident here. And the twenty-one discussed at the last meeting of the council. At the regular session of the council, we had a brief discussion about paying the airport fuel bill. And one of the councilmen excused himself and was escorted out of the room. So he had no chance to comment on the transaction or vote on it because he had that conflict of interest. Because he works for that company. Then we fast-forward to the closed session. And in that, the public is not present. And the staff and council and city attorney, city manager, and others, I'm not quite sure, are all in attendance. Also in attendance is the councilman who gladly stated that he had a conflict of interest in this issue. And he was allowed to go into this closed session out of the eye of the public and the press, I assume, and do whatever he wants to do in that meeting. I have no idea what freedom he has in there. But I do know that he doesn't have the right to vote. But if he has the right to speak, then I think that is a travesty of justice. Because if not the public eye, that's not adhering to this transparency policy that certain individuals have always preaching for, then I cannot understand the rationale between the treatment on the regular session and then on the closed session where all of the details are already published for the public to read. People involved in the transaction and they have the money involved. That's my opinion there. I think that's a travesty of justice. And I believe the city staff ought to reexamine that procedure because all the people that I've talked to in the public do not understand this discrepancy in treatment on the closed session. And furthermore, we would question, why does it have to be a secret session? That's my comment. Anybody on the council already? Attorney could answer to any of those comments that we have here.
Your time is up, but we'll let the attorney answer that question.
Well, just to talk about why we go into closed session on that. The Brown Act allows going into closed sessions to hear price and terms of payment. How many probably will go in? We go into closed session on those matters because the Brown Act allows going into closed session to discuss the price and terms of payment for leases, for leases or purchases.
What allows you?
The Brown Act.
The Brown Act.
Yes. So that's why we go into closed session on those items.
Now, if the person that declares themselves having a conflict of interest, are they allowed to speak?
You know, I'm not going to get into what happened in closed session.
What?
I'm not going to get into what happened in closed session.
I am in the public.
That's not an issue.
Why should that be confidential? We may be on the council ourselves one day. Is it only creepy to you five people?
Yeah.
That's correct. Well, I'll have to accept that right now. Any other comments? And can anybody explain why in regular session, the councilman that declares a conflict of interest gets a chief of police to escort him out of the room? For the discussion and the vote?
Well, we had an opinion from the FPTC on that, the Thermal Legal Practices Commission.
Gotcha.
So he has to do that. That's one way of handling it. Some cities handle it a little differently. We've chosen not to. Do you have a copy of that decision? Probably. But it may be available. Pardon me? Could you make it available? I'm just talking to the clerk. Okay.
Is there any other opinion from the council? I'd certainly like to hear what you think of this issue. And I'm willing to hold open sessions from the public on this.
I'm really sorry, but you're out of time. If you would like to contact Jay or Corey tomorrow on this issue, I'm sure they can discuss it further with you. Okay? Thank you.
Well, B. Graff, I have some documents for councilmembers. When you guys did those, did you take the opportunity to read? Can you do that real quick? It's called the document Latches. It's a... It's a... Well, naked man, Mary. Can you start my time after you take a look at this?
Well, I'm glancing at it, and all of us are going to the top.
Well, I want you to understand what you're reading up.
I don't understand, so I haven't.
Okay. See, the document Latches, if you read it, then you actually hear a proof and you go through the second page. This is if you have a legal claim, you have to act on it in a timely manner. What I've been asking you for, and if you're just perusing, if you look at the third page, my employee respond my employee rights, which was for me to be heard. I turned in the proper documents to be heard. And then you guys, as in subsection three down here, did not create a date to be heard. But yet, when Jay Johnson was here, he used the document Latches as an argument stating that I was the one who wasn't entitled. I was the one that fired... I was the one that failed to come and make the request in a timely manner. There's nothing in here that says B. Graff needs to come and structure up and order for you guys to make arrangements on your schedules or tell you you need to be here. And if you read subsection B on the third page, you can see that it's very specific to you. The council will set the date for the appeal. Are we seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, understanding that Latches does not even apply to this in any shape or manner fashion. Because what we have is an employee agreement between the city and the employee. This is an argument for litigation in court. We're not going to court. Tom may say, we may have pending litigation. I'm not suing anybody. I just want my rights on it. But he'll shut you guys down and he'll say, we don't know if there's pending litigation. We don't know what's going on, Tom. I haven't filed anything. So if we can stop saying that, you'll be the first to know when I do. But I have it. So stop scaring them with that response. So you as councilmembers now, you need to be responsible for your actions. You have a job to do. And with Jay Johnson, the way he got up here to beat me as well, that was a little bit ridiculous. But see, he's a subcontractor. This is how Greg and the guys do it. They get somebody else involved, so their hands are clean. They want to make somebody else make some noise so that they don't look bad. Well, that's all out of the way now. I showed you what Jay Johnson's argument was. Makes no sense. Jay Johnson was really... I mean, really shocking, actually, for an attorney to make that argument based off of he actually knows what the document Latches is. But he sold it to you guys because since then, you don't want to respond to me based off that information. This is the information I just provided to you. Now, you're well-educated. Joe, teacher, thirty-three, thirty-five years. Karen, took a degree. Susan, what, four, five jobs, drug counselor, teacher, newspaper, board, all kinds of stuff. Phil, copied and prepared.
You're out of time, Mr. Brown.
Michael, I mean, you run a business. You're educated people. You should be able to make the right decisions. Now, can you read this and say that what Mr. Johnson was arguing applies to you?
I'm not qualified to say that.
But you are qualified to say that, right?
Your time is up, Mr. Brown.
But you are qualified to say that. You're the mayor.
I'm not an attorney.
I just showed you that it doesn't apply.
You're out of time.
Your time's up. So that's... So you're going to run and hide under the umbrella of free minutes each time? Yeah? At least you're honest, Tom. But you're an attorney, so you really don't care who's going to be heard.
You're out of time, Mr. Brown.
No, I mean, well... Well, I pass that out to you guys. This is my boy rights. Time to be heard. This is the agreement you were given. You're saying I'm supposed to be heard. So we'll catch you some in a couple weeks. You guys will be here, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Counsel? Mayor? Can you pick us to District Five? I need a quick clarification. Do we have four councilmembers or do we have five?
I believe we have five.
So you're a councilmember, not a mayor?
I'm a councilmember serving as mayor at this time.
So you're the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so as a mayor, do you do city council stuff?
Yes.
And are you paid for both of those?
No, sir.
You're hitting one script for serving as which?
A councilperson.
A councilperson. That's true. You can verify that? Okay. The point I'm trying to make is, when you're appointed mayor, your responsibilities for District Five kind of went to the wayside, the way I understand it. So that leaves an opening in District Five to be represented by an actual councilmember, not an appointed mayor. I think we need to look into this and have an elected mayor by the public and let the five districts have their own council so I don't see a conflict of interest with the mayor versus my District Five. And that's what my concerns are about this. And I would like your rebuttal, if you have any made. Madam Mayor? Don't look at the legal type. It's you and me there.
You're not allowed to.
First of all, I still represent District Five. I'm an appointed mayor. My council duties are the same for my entire four-year term. I will be mayor for another year and a half. Any problems that are in District Five, let me know. I would be happy to address them.
I don't even think you're addressing what you initially were voted in for as far as what your platform said. So if I have a problem with you saying, okay, I'm going to do all this stuff over here, but when I'm elected, the council group will put me in there and all that goes to the wayside. I think that is wrong. I think we need to have representation. And I must stand by my statement. We need to have five counselors and one mayor. I think that is a waste of seat for a councilmember. I think the city deserves a hired mayor that will represent the city as a mayor, not a... Today, I'm a councilmember. Oh, today, I'm over here, I'm a mayor. That don't cut it off. I think legally, I don't know. Attorney, you can jump in on this.
You sure you want me to?
Yes, I do.
You're absolutely wrong.
I didn't say I was right or wrong. I said, this is what I'd like to see. That doesn't mean I'm wrong.
That's your prerogative.
Okay. So what's wrong with having an elected mayor?
You can have an elected.
Five.
But the councilperson, you have to go through an election to have that form of government. What if... What if Farland has that form?
I don't care about the Farland.
I'm telling you, that's how you get into a...
Okay, I'm done with you. Counsel, can you please respond?
What do you want them to respond to? Whether or not to have an elected mayor?
Anybody?
What do you want them to respond to?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sir.
Sure. Can I call you, Jim?
Yes, sure.
All right.
Okay.
This is our form of government. We elect five councilmembers, one from each district.
All right.
And we select someone to act as mayor for two years. You, as mayor and councilmember, you're still responsible for your district as a mayor, but you also run the meetings. It's not like you come into city council, have a desk, and operate the city.
No, you used to go all these fancy dinners and get awards and...
When you were mayor, were you elected as a mayor or just as a councilmember?
First, I was elected as a counselor. And I served my term. And then I was elected by the city to be the mayor.
At large?
At large. I had no council responsibilities from that day forward. And I just see a conflict of interest here because I want to know my mayor is my mayor today and always. Not one day will I'm a councilperson, call me, be... You know, call me the mayor.
If I may.
And that's the mayor's statement.
If I may.
I want the council's statement.
When you're the mayor, you're a mayor slash councilmember.
No. Here you are.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Well, okay, in your case. In our form of government, until the electorate says, we want an elected mayor and then five councilmembers, and then we're going to have six people, then we're going to have... You'd have to redistrict four districts.
Probably.
And then select a mayor outside of that.
See, you can only vote in case of a tie.
No.
Yes.
You can put that in the contract or however.
So, okay.
I'm sorry? Tom?
That's not the way an elected mayor operates under the California law. If you're a charter city... If you're a charter city, you can do that. Like Bay Harbor Shit, the mayor only votes in case of a tie. But if you had an elected mayor under the applicable statutes, it was four, five councilmembers, one mayor and four councilmembers, and they'd all have the right to vote.
Okay. I'd like to make sure about here. I think we need that here. I think that will live and expose some more transparency, which all you guys want. And I think we need that. And, now legal, how do we do this with the majority?
You petition the council to call an election.
I make a motion with the council to set up an election.
No, you have to petition them.
You didn't say that. You said ask them.
No, I said petition the council.
Now you say it.
No, I said it right away.
Okay, that's what I'd like to see. So what does it take to petition, then?
You know, you'll have to check with the clerk.
Clerk? You're up.
Jim, it's a process.
It's three minutes. I know it's a way over.
I'm really sorry, but you're out of time. You can contact...
I'm sorry, too.
Afterwards, after the meeting, call her tomorrow, and she'll be happy to discuss this with you.
Okay, so you guys have...
I'm just... Just one moment. You can pull off of the Internet, which I have done, and I've made numerous copies for people around town who had exactly your question. This is the comparison. This is the table that shows general law versus charter law, okay? For small towns, big towns, whatever. This is a very, very good document that describes about ninety-nine percent of what you've just talked about. Pull this off of the computer, print it out, take a look at that, and understand what that means, charter versus general law. And then you can get with the clerk and figure out if proceeding with an elected mayor is what this community wants.
Okay.
I personally feel it's a good thing to have an elected mayor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And this is available online, though.
Any counselors have another comment? I'm over my time with all that, but I don't care, Rick.
Well, you need... You are out of time, sir. I'm really sorry.
I understand that, ma'am. But I have one last question on the floor. And Ken's the only woman that has responded.
Jim, let's let the process flow. As far as the way it's worked for, since inception, it's worked for the community for a long time. But is it due for a change?
We are way over due for a change.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good afternoon. Chief, everybody. Susan Williams, how you doing?
Aye.
Good. Jay Slosser, how you doing?
Right, sir.
I have a problem. Is it, do I address you or can I address him?
Tell us what's the problem.
Well, my problem is my wife and me in the doghouse have been going through a lot of stuff lately, since after the election. Codes and violations and everything. We've been trying to get everything taken care of. And my wife was over there with Mr. Slosser. And you like attacking my wife, right? Right? You like talking down to her, making her cry. We're the law. We can do what we want. Is that the way you... Is the city supposed to be there to help you and not attack somebody? Especially my wife. Now, are you saying that you didn't attack her and down looked at her, say, I'm the law, I can do what I want? Did you say that?
I have no response.
You don't have no response?
Yes.
That's absolutely... There's a witness. But there's no reason... I just don't understand. While we're trying to figure out how to save the doghouse loom after being, after the election. Everybody knows it's a hunch what's going on. It's like, you know, we're trying. And I'm trying to move out to Texas. I'm trying to hold on to what we got and try to move out to Texas. And so, you know, my bygones are bygones, right? I just want to leave. I want to make my money, sell my business and leave. But when I get in the tank and I didn't... I started out with one complaint. It started out with one complaint. Then we did that. Then it was two complaints. Then it was three complaints. Then it was four complaints. Then it was putting the road from the street to the doghouse. And then it was like... It was unbelievable, the stuff they were asking. Then they said that we're paying out the fire department. That's what he said. And he had retaliation. And then he talks down to my wife. I had to come back from Texas instead of worrying about my business up there. All I want to do is get this done and be on my way. My kids got one year to graduate, and I want to leave in peace. That's all I want. You talked to my wife, and you said that the wall goes back up, all this goes away. You went like this. And all of a sudden, right? You talked down to her and you lied to her. Now you're bringing up more stuff, and I'm done with it. And not just that, chief. You know your code enforcement guy, right? When I went over there to meet with the city with Greg Garrett, he told me he gets a lot of phone calls on American flags. I've been flying them flags for eight years. You know why they're not up no more? Because I've been told, he told me, if I fly my flags up there, right? He gets a lot of phone calls. Better if you clean that up. What's that mean when you get written up all the time for something that you don't do? So that's why the flags don't fly no more.
You're out of time, sir. I'm really sorry. I would suggest that when Mr. Garrett returns, that you set up a conference with him. I believe he tried to call you back, but your voicemail was full. He couldn't leave a message. So if you would like to do that, I would suggest you do that next week.
Chief, did your chief, did your code enforcement tell you anything about flying my flags? Because on the response was on the city. They said, you guys said that you guys didn't know about that. I know that. But I know the code enforcement guy said that.
Is this three minutes left for me?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Slosser, I would like to say that I am in full understanding of what you and your wife and the witness that was involved in that meeting were told by city staff. I have taken note of that. That is, I'm in full understanding of what that situation entailed.
All I want to do is leave the peace. And it's all my business. Let my wife run it, and let's leave the peace. And I don't want to close down the doghouse. I want to bring a little salad and move on to a new location. But when my wife's getting attacked, when I'm out of town and verbally attacked, where somebody small like you got to look down at her and made her cry, I said to help her out. And there's nothing we can do. There's nothing we can do. You got to figure it all out yourself. You're there to help us out.
You're out of time, sir.
You know? And this is like you guys, oh, no, I can't hand you all the paperwork, right? So you guys go overlook everything that the city's making you do. This guy's making you do. Why can't you help us?
Your time is up, sir.
You can't help out a little bit? You spoke against it. Huh? You can't... You don't have nothing to say? I have everything to say. Leave the people. You know what I'm saying? I want to leave the peace. Abuse of government authority.
For the record, there were two witnesses to that meeting. Michael Bigley, San Canyon.
Just a minute.
Oh, I didn't know you had a floor.
Oh, it's not over?
Go ahead, sir.
Ken, I believe you owe me a phone call if you're going to take a position on this issue and actually understand the issue of the council.
It's okay.
Michael Bigley, San Canyon.
Excuse me, Mr. Bigley. Sorry, sorry, one moment. Yes. When I have constituents, people in this audience, that come to me with concerns, I will address those concerns to the best of my ability. That is my open policy, it has been from the day that I was sworn into the seat. I've made my phone number very public, if you don't have it, write it down, it's 805-508-3912. If my constituents have a problem with anything going on in this town regarding issues, the city itself, or otherwise, or anything in between, do not hesitate to go and talk to me. Thank you, Mr. Bigley.
Michael Bigley, San Canyon, I will be representing my group in transparency and accountability to government. Last meeting, I notified you guys of the actions of Jay Slosser and I asked for independent investigation. Um, now you've heard it again, I want to see an independent investigation. Um, I don't know who, who it would be determined into, it doesn't happen to be the labor board, I'm not sure yet. Um, you guys are always worried about lawsuits. The thing that gives you guys the ace in the hole is you've got the taxpayer money to, I mean, through these legal actions. So my group is going to start raising money for a legal defense fund to come out of the city if it has to be for a couple of issues, uh, already with my notice. And I'll just put you guys on notice, too. Uh, there's concerns of the EIR, where your state branch body is being conducted by the city, because the influence they might push through there. And the people in Mountain Meadows are concerned that you're going to take their water table away from them by building some new wells up there. And I noticed in the paperwork, it said that possibly that money would be used for drilling new wells. So you might have some pushback on your EIR for that. And it might be noted the city of Tehachapi probably shouldn't be doing that EIR with the contractor and then charging them for it, should probably be the contractor pushing it through. So, you know, you guys are worried about lawsuits, they're probably coming. And it all it takes is money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand, Jay, you had someone in the office with you in addition to, uh, the person, say, Ken.
I'm not talking about person, I'm not talking about person.
I would just ask Mr. Hettie, though, these issues to get to the bottom of and make an appointment with Jay and with Greg Garrett and sit down and get to the bottom of it versus reading whatever's on social media. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, contrary to what you may believe about social media, if one of our constituents, and I'm talking collectively, come to either of us, any of us five, with a concern or an issue pertaining to things that are going on in this community, we have the obligation, we took the oath, to address those situations. And just like I asked last week about Mr. Graff's issue, Mr. Schroeder, you know, we, I, I asked very specifically if we could talk about whether open session, closed session, that situation. Now we're talking about, Mr. Uh, Mr. Smith, you're recommending that I go have a, a meeting or make a phone call and sit down and talk about these issues. If we're going to talk about stuff, let's talk about stuff. If we're going to selectively talk about stuff, then we might as well just save our breath. We need to either understand what's going on in this community, we need to understand what's going on with employees, or we don't.
The people need to know what's happening.
Excuse me?
Open session. Leave the people.
Um, yes, sir?
Jay, I, I have a change of, uh, the city, uh, for you, for you, excuse me. And, uh, nobody accused me of being smart, so I don't understand, uh, just what's going on with P. Graff. Are we allowed to talk about that? In other words, P. Graff filed an appeal for what, uh, what happened to him?
You can talk about it, but they're not going to respond unless they individually want to.
Well, okay, that's, you can answer my question, so, he, he, P. Graff filed an appeal.
Do you have any more to say?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead and say it.
Well, can I, that's my first question.
No, we're not going to answer that question.
Why not? You said he had the case to fight himself.
How do I find out about a question like that?
Take a question, you're going to answer a question.
Give the gender.
Okay, then I, then I, my next question would be, probably have to do the same thing. Uh, if he filed an appeal, has it been granted in the appeal?
He did not file an appeal and he has not been granted an appeal.
Okay, so I answered all my questions. He did not file an appeal and he has not been granted. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Clint Hayes, uh, undisclosed, undisclosed location.
Um, you, what city, are you in the city attached to?
Depends which night. I'm sleeping in my car, thank you very much. I don't know, uh, I've been to every city council that had a meeting this year, um, and everybody, it's missed one or two or things like that, but, uh, the last city council meeting, um, I was arrested by the police, six police cars cruised to my house, and I was arrested for eavesdropping, for recording a conversation I had with our police chief for trying to report a crime. Now, I want to be very clear, it is not against the law to record a police. In fact, in 2015, uh, Governor Brown signed a SB 411, which codified and clarified, uh, the laws of guarding acts, and basically said that you record a police in any public city or in any place, you have a right to be, okay? Well, I'm invited to his office, and I, it's implied that I already have a right to be there, okay? So I got charged with, uh, check this out, felony eavesdropping for recording a police. This is 2019, folks, okay? I got taken essential receiving out of state and holding some pile of trash that big. And is this a democracy we have? And this isn't the first incident, but let me just give you a little bit of a history. I'm going to start with this last one real quick, just so you know, when I was in the car, one of the sergeants told me, and I go, this is happening to you because your buddy's with P. Graff. First amendment guarantees our right to appeal the government, petition the government, and our right to association, okay? And he came out straight on this, said that, okay? There's case history on this. A person was worth $275,000 when they were arrested for recording the police last year in Sacramento, okay? Something needs to happen. And it goes back further than that, back in June last year, um, I came to my first city council meeting, and when I approached, uh, I believe it was, uh, Dennis Mollstrom, and, uh, the, the, you were sitting right next to, uh, the mountain airways, and as I approached by the plane, our police chief tried to intervene before I dressed up. You can go back and look at the video of that, it's off the record, okay? And ever since then, it's been constantly harassed by the police. Why do you think I ran for office? I want to get these guys off my back. I've never had a criminal record, okay? Now I'm being, now I'm going through defamation, slander, and all these things, charges that don't even make sense or not even on the books, okay? So I had to pay a thousand dollars. And then, when I, when I, when I contacted you, you said, "Contact Greg Garrett." Time for Greg Garrett. Phil, can you just get off your phone, please, sir? Thank you.
Excuse me, he's on the phone because he's timing you and you're out of time.
Every minute.
Well, I challenge you to remove me. I, I'm going to challenge everybody to respond, let's, let's go ahead and do it again.
Okay, I need you to take your seat.
No, I'm not going to take my seat.
Then I will have to have you escorted.
You're done. Thank you.
So you don't want to hear it.
You've heard enough of it. We've heard it, you're right.
It's called color of the law.
You're done.
You look like you're about to have a choice, sir.
We need to sit down, please.
I know, I'm tired.
Well, then move over to the side.
I'll move over to the side, yes.
You're, you're out of time.
Way over to the side.
Uh, Mr. Schroeder, I don't believe you, as the city attorney, should be saying anything regarding this stuff. This should be coming through the chair, that's point of order. I'm, you, you're right, it's up in the chair. The chair is key for control. The chair, uh, under the color of the council, we had, Mr. Schroeder, if the chief needs to do something, the mayor can request the chief take action. This is not a city attorney issue.
Abuse of color of authority.
No. No, sir, I told you no, sir, before in that video, it's on Facebook, or you can, you can do it. Take me to jail, I've already been to jail.
I'm going to ask.
No, I'm not, I'm going to ask you to take a seat, just a second. I'm going to ask the council one time.
One term of motion, please. I will ask you to sit down.
I'm going to ask the council for a motion, to ask Department of Justice, I mean, that's the department. I was told to stay away from city council meetings by your lieutenant, that it was not helpful.
Come on.
No, you.
Grab your book.
This is the Constitution, sir, maybe you should try and read it. No, get your hands off it, sir. Either arrest me or go sit down, okay?
Did the council hear his request?
Yes, we heard his request.
About an investigation?
Yeah, you guys can do a vote right now. This is our democracy right here.
Because this is the fifth time this has happened. It's right here in this man.
Mr. Graff, you're out of order.
You guys are a bunch of cowards that lie behind.
Mr. Graff, Mr. Graff, you need to be quiet or you're going to have to leave.
Uniform gang.
We need to have order.
Yeah.
Do your jobs.
We're going to move on. Okay, all right, we're done with public comments. Moving on to item number four.
Did you check, see if there were other comments?
Excuse me, Mr. Graff, I can call another police officer to have you removed. I'm asking you politely, please stop talking.
Uniform gang.
Excuse me?
Uniform gang, that's what this is.
I see, all right. Moving on, there will be no more public comments. Item number four.
Madam Mayor, I need to refuse myself as I'm going to play my side petroleum.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, we need to have order. Uniform gang.
Whatever, we have to have order. Um, okay, um, our, um, councilman has left the room, I need a motion for dispersments and bills for RSI petroleum from May 29, 2019 to June 10, 2019.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to, uh, leave the chambers, I, uh, I feel there's no longer any reason for me to be here.
Thank you, sir. I'll still entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
All second.
The move to the seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Number six, Development Services.
Uniform gang. Uniform gang. That's what she said, of course, the uniform gang. Go to the side.
Okay. Development Services Director reports.
All right, you need just a second.
Okay.
All right, Honorable Mayor and council members, the item I have before you tonight is the introduction, um, for amendments to ordinance number 14-03-717, uh, which is our zoning code. Uh, sorry, I just, the, um, in 2014, the city of Tehachapi went through a major revision to the Tehachapi zoning code. Uh, by October of that year, the zoning code had been updated and formally adopted by the city council. We've had two provisions to the code, um, since that time. Most of those, however, however, have been focused on identifying errors and omissions in the text and cleaning up contradictions between, um, that document. And so, um, however, uh, since that time, staff has also been utilizing the code for all kinds of different purposes. It's been a good economy, and so we're busy utilizing it for different purposes. Um, and we've identified in this latest set of provision, uh, more than simple errors and omissions, but some, uh, additional changes to the zoning code that produce additional flexibility and provide meaningful clarity to how our processes, um, move forward in the planning department. So, uh, the amendments proposed tonight, uh, we have, we're proposing to amend numerous chapters of the zoning code, they're listed there in the staff report, um, and, uh, but let me go through them one by one, summarizing each of them, feel free to either stop me as I'm talking about them or, uh, or get me at the end, maybe it's probably better if I do it all at one time, considering, uh, so we'll do that. So let me tell you what they are, and then, of course, if you have additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Um, modification to chapter 210, the traditional neighborhood development site planning standards, um, this chapter governs a requirement that if you're going to subdivide more than ten acres within the city, that you have a neighborhood master plan. That requirement already exists in the zoning code, but it lacks clarity on what goes into a neighborhood master plan. And so, our intent here is simply to provide some, some clarity on what makes up a neighborhood master plan, and, um, and then it also ties in with that adjustments to chapter nine about the procedures for submitting them and dealing with them. Um, we're updating land use tables in chapters 3220 and 330, um, specifically looking at the issue of microbrewery group of imperishable manufacturing among the zones. We find, found a lack of clarity between what they were defined as, how big they can be, and how they can be utilized in zones, so there are edits that are consistently utilized through there, and then your package would have the date and details. Again, if you need some further clarification, I'm happy to add it, and answer it. Additional, uh, the next item in chapter 330, we're modifying, um, use of awnings, decks, trellises, and patio covers. Uh, this modification is fairly minor and is designed to provide more flexibility to homeowners and, and, uh, reduce the number of formal variance applications that are required for somebody to do something as simple as adding a patio to the back of their house, which is something we would normally support, but based on the way this code is written now, it's, it produces some fairly expensive variance applications for things that the planning commission would say, yes, you want to automatically practically, so, um, in section 330-160, um, planned development zones, these are, uh, a PB zone is a far more significant document that's effectively like a special zoning code that is created for individual development. Um, and, and again, uh, we began utilizing this section for the first time, uh, earlier this year, and realized that we need a little bit more clarity on the standards that govern, um, when the planning commission says yes, and what, uh, what steps they have to make sure they achieve in order to, uh, to do that. In section 440, um, we're adding, that's the applicability to, in this particular case, we're adding a new article E to the landscaping standards to clarify something we believe is in the code, but not very clear now, which is a simple requirement that you maintain the landscaping of your property, um, in perpetuity. There was a, there was a text change that made it seem debatable, and we feel like the council should have never intended that issue to be debatable. Um, in section 510, uh, the villa standards, this is a housing type standard in our code, um, it's really oriented towards apartment complexes, um, and we felt like some modifications to this standard to allow multiple structures on a single lot and allow some flexibility in the building placement on the lot, um, was helpful for this particular standard associated with apartment complexes. Um, in sections 710 and 720, these are our sign code, all of chapter seven is the city's sign code, um, we're proposing numerous changes. Um, the first one is that in section 710 for downtown signs, um, the, uh, relative to temporary campaign signs, the requirement would be to prohibit temporary campaign signs on vacant property. That would be the same for signs outside of the downtown, that's chapter 720, uh, so that change, we're trying, we're suggesting we make, and I can explain our reasoning, if you'd like to hear it, um, for those, uh, for the prohibition against temporary campaign signs on vacant lots.
Laura, are you sure?
Uh, why don't you wait until I'm finished, please?
Then we'll take, we'll take questions as soon as.
Take it on. The, also, in chapter 710 and 720, there's an inconsistency of the use of sign walkers, which is people holding signs and shaking them. Uh, the intent, uh, we believe is that sign walker should be prohibited in the city entirely. Um, right now, they're prohibited in, in the downtown, but not outside of the downtown, does that sound right? Or I have this backwards.
Yeah.
Um, and, and frankly, it is one of those items that staff recommends is just simpler to enforce if we don't, if we don't permit sign walkers anywhere in town. Um, in 710, 220, in enforcement, which you'll see also in 720, um, we're, uh, correcting just a simple typographical error there, um, in that item, 710-220. Um, 720-120, this is again that same modification prohibiting temporary campaign signs in vacant lots. Um, 720-160, um, again, that's the, that's the consistency of the, of the prohibited, prohibited sign walker component of the signs. In 720-185, uh, we're proposing a new section to be added to 720 that provides remedies for signs that are not maintained or abandoned. It is a periodic issue, actually, one of the phone calls that I'm frustrated for you that I get most often is the Pacino signs. Um, currently, our code doesn't allow us code force against the fact that the sign is, represents a vacant building and has been for years. So it's not super, uh, heavy-handed, it gives the, the property owner time to deal with it, but it gives us the ability to require removal of a, of an unmaintained or abandoned sign, uh, and so that's what that modification is for. Chapter 910, um, the proposal is just adding the neighborhood master plan to the, chapter 910, these are procedures, our process for applications, and it adds that item to the list. Um, 960-20, um, that's, uh, architectural design cycle review process, that's probably our most common application in the planning department, is the approval of a new development. And we felt like the planning commission, um, would benefit from having, and they agreed, um, from having a very specific set of lists of findings they must make to approve a project. So finding might be that the project is not detrimental to the community around it, that a finding that the building is architecturally compatible with the community around it. Um, and so those items are itemized in that applicability standard and put into the code so that they have something to hang their hat on when they're making, you guys know the city. Um, 960-050, um, that's the, I take that back, I got that wrong, I apologize. Uh, my previous statement is, is the modification of 960-050. The modification of 960-020 is just clarifying, um, providing greater detail for when, for instance, something that's a little confusing, let me give you the best example I can, which is if somebody owns a building, wants to come make a minor modification to the outside of the building, an architectural change, well, at what point is that a large enough architectural change that the planning commission should get to have a say over the details of it versus when it's a small enough issue, then staff should just either not take affirmative at all, say you want to just paint your building, or, uh, or you or you're making a minor facade change that isn't large enough to justify the expense and time associated with the Planning Commission. In trying to be clear for the business community and being business-friendly, while also protecting the city's interests in making sure that somebody doesn't take a building and just turn it into a carnival without any of us knowing anything about it, or something to that effect. And so, modifications to nine sixty, oh two oh clarify and provide some distinct percentages. For instance, I believe it's twenty-five percent of building aside. If twenty-five percent or more changes, then you have to go back for an architectural meeting from the Planning Commission. And then lastly, Chapter nine dash point seventy-five is a minor mod, is a new section of the zoning code, and it lays out a framework and circumstances in which the director, myself, can offer minor modifications from the zoning code. Zoning code is, in its very nature, extremely strict. It says specifically, for instance, how many parking spots you must have, or exactly how many feet from the street your building must be, or exactly how many feet to the tenth of a ten meter it can be, and no taller. And the reality is, is that that doesn't always, those little details like that can sometimes flex by a very insignificant margin, and yet, because there's no flexibility in the zoning code, our only response is to, is to, you know, deny them or make them go be a more expensive process in front of the Planning Commission. So what we're proposing tonight is that a very specific set of rules be put in place that allow the director to allow minor modifications. And that's included in your packet. Towards the end, there's a chart in there that indicates the various modifications and the percentage by which the director now has some flexibility under this proposal to extend to an applicant. So for instance, in the issue of building height, this would provide the flexibility of a building height improvement of, I believe it's up to ten percent more, no greater than a two-foot modification over the building height standard. So it's not a large margin. None of these modifications are large amounts, but they provide just a little bit of wiggle room so that applicants, again, if they're right on the line, can avoid either a denial or an expensive appeal process over a fairly minor item. And again, there are very specific guidelines under which I can utilize those. There will be a fee for the utilization of minor modification process. It's not an extensive fee, but it's far less than the variance beginning gives us. Let me give you another example that's very real. There is, there's allowance for a parking modification. And the scenario that I would lay out for you to point out the purpose of this would be, you have a downtown business, an old building that was used fifty years ago as a, you know, I don't know, some manufacturing facility. And today, a new owner builds it and wants to revitalize it as a beautiful downtown restaurant. Well, the sign code for our codes may say, okay, you now need thirty-seven parking spots, you know, for that restaurant use, and they've only got twenty-five parking spots. No one thinks it's really reasonable or appropriate to say that a person, you know, tear down part of the building and turn it into a parking lot. Or nobody thinks it's necessarily a good idea. In that situation, you can deny that application because, well, you know, the restaurant's great. I did even get twenty-five parking spots, but you need thirty-seven, so the answer's no. You know, so there is a component in there that allows us to flex on parking in unique circumstances with a unique limit to that so that we can make the code fit the right approach. Lastly, that's, lastly, Section eleven is just a few modifications to the definition section of the code again. Those are primarily associated with group of microbrewery and clarifying what each one of those are and what they do. I do have one modification, Tom, and I don't know how we can fold it into there. There are two items on the proposed table for Chapter nine point seventy-five that staff no longer thinks are necessary. Can I, do I have to reintroduce this with that? Or can I simply introduce it and explain to them? And in the final version, I'll remove two items from the-
Today, we just find out what the council wants and what they don't want.
Okay.
If they want to have that, and they can, and then when they adopt the ordinance, it'll be more focused.
Okay, very good. Let me take you then briefly to that, to the one spot where I have, we've identified, this week I contacted one of our consultants to discuss the details of one of these items, and who recommended that we remove two items from the proposed Chapter nine seventy-five. I'll tell you how to make it, sorry. It's on page ninety of the PDF. It's actually on page eighty-nine, starting on there.
Sorry, I want the web version, so I-
I have the web version too, yeah, sorry.
Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine, please. Okay, bottom of the page, this is the new Chapter nine point seventy-five on minor modification. Item one in that table is redundant to items two and three. So in the final version, I would bring you, this is just the introduction tonight, I would remove item one from the table. And then on the next page, actually, I would remove item seven from the table, which is, I'll admit, a nonsensical modification in a way that slipped its way in various versions that we did. So allowing buildings to be placed in a right-of-way line when the right-of-way is not located in the back of sidewalk. That, anyway. That's already allowed, so there's no modification necessary. So with those two items then as the modification, my recommendation is that you introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Tashby, amending ordinance number fourteen dash oh three dash seven one seven, Chapters two ten, three twenty, three thirty, four forty, five ten, seven ten, seven twenty, nine ten, nine sixty, nine seventy-five, and eleven ten of the Tashby zoning code pursuant to sequel guidelines in Section fifteen oh six one B three. General rule exception. Obviously, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, sir, you have a question?
On the signage.
I need you to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
Jim Jacobs, District five. Did you circle where I wanted clarification?
Uh, it was in the middle of signage, I'm sorry, I didn't-
It was for the signage.
I think it's seven, yeah. Okay, which one?
All of it. Get rid of them.
Great.
They blew the landscape.
Yeah.
They do, so I'm all for that.
Thank you.
And I just want to go, how is that enforcement process going to work? Because we got people from Bakersfield coming up here. They make plant signs all over the place. And to tell you the truth, I think they're ungodly. They're disgusting. The corner of Tashby Boulevard and Tucker. I mean, that place is planted. And I don't know if that's a homeowner thing, or if they just come over and place them. But there should be place and time for all of that.
Yeah, our motivation for the campaign signs is exactly what you stated, but actually, the enforcement gets simpler under this approach. The problem the city was having in the last, particularly in the last election was specifically on vacant land, it's very difficult for code enforcement to know whether an individual sign holder has permission from that property owner to place the sign. We know that at the corner of Tashby and Tucker, they can't all have had permission for the twenty-seven signs there.
Yeah.
Instead, probably one or two got permission, and then it just sort of populated itself. Well, staff is in the impossible position of not being able to enforce against that. Because unless we literally pick up the phone every day, hundreds of times a day, calling, trying to get ahold of vacant property owners who a lot of times are not available to us and go, well, did you really want this guy's sign on there? Which is not reasonable. A prohibition against signs on vacant property entirely allows us to just go pick the sign up and be done. And the, so, and the concept is, is that if it's not vacant, that the person who owns that property and occupies that property, be it a business or a residential person, will police their own front yard. They're certainly not going to allow numerous competing peoples to put signs on their yard. And so enforcement gets radically simplified. We will just take signs off of vacant land, period, without any, I mean, each elected official here, you guys can all testify, signed the document when you filled in your election paperwork. You received notification on house sign rules in the city. Everybody signed the document saying they agree and will abide by those rules. You know, whether they all got by, I don't know.
It all breaks loose.
You know, but, so we'll do the same, we'll continue to do the same thing. You'll be provided notification that signs on vacant lots, and that if you put one there, we will not work you. We will simply go remove the sign. And we believe that that modification will make enforcement much simpler and will have a positive effect of not lighting the community as much, so.
I hope so, because it's a plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience regarding this? Counsel?
Introduction by Tyler. Motion to introduce by Tyler.
The motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, then.
Then moved and seconded based on staff's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a three-zero vote. Yes?
Four-zero.
Four-zero, I'm sorry, I can't count either.
That's all right.
City manager's report. Oh, number seven, I'm sorry. That's right. You wanted that poll.
I'm glad, Jim Jacobs, District five. I've been wondering about this situation since I've been here. There's no rhyme, no reason on when the street sweeper comes through. They zigzag in and out, and I don't know what you guys are paying for the service, but it's half-assed. We need to save east side one day, west side the other way. Come up with a schedule so we can get our streets swept and operated. And now that we're going to lease for sixty months on a new street sweeper, let's put it to full use. Not partly in front of the house, and then out in the middle street, out the house. And you can go through all these residential areas. I drive around and I look. And you can see exactly where he's gone. Especially when you have the narrower streets, not like downtown where you've got like a Boulevard with, you know, but that would help, I think, clean up the city also, to make sure we're doing a good job, not just a job.
What do you do on these streets? Both sides are full of cars.
That's why we need an ordinance or something so people know on this day, this street will be swept, and you have to find a new place to park. Park in your driveway, because you've got six cars, you shouldn't have them. Maybe that's what it is.
Um, I do have to say, because my dog does not like the street sweeper, that every Monday morning around ten o'clock, the street sweeper goes down my street because my dog barks at it. Every Monday, rain is raining. I don't know what the rest of the schedule is, but-
Right. But I think that would help to beautify the city, because that's what we're after. We want to create the neighborhood, we're paying for it, let's get what we're paying for. That's it, I'm good.
Thank you.
You got time, bud?
How many do I?
You neither.
Mr. Marsh, do we have a schedule that in the street sweeper is running?
Yes, for reference, the street sweeper currently operates basically forty hours per week. Every day from seven till three, roughly, Monday through Thursday. Yeah, Monday through Thursday. There is a route. Because of some extenuating circumstances in certain areas, sometimes it takes them longer to do certain areas, like maybe there's cars in the way, or there's a certain area that has a big pile of leaves. Somebody mowed their lawn and blew all the grass out in the street, so it takes them a little bit longer to do those areas. We fully expect that with this new sweeper, that will be reduced. This sweeper is obviously new, but also far more efficient and far better at cleaning the street than what we have now. So, yes, there is a route, there is a schedule. Roughly, once a week, he gets through the entire city. There's some areas that he doesn't cover, some corners of the city that he doesn't cover every single week just because they're, you know, rarely traveled. But for the most part, he gets through the entire city. And I have to say, this is, I've been here in this position for a year. You're the first person I've heard this complaint about, street sweeping. We have gotten nothing but extremely positive comments from everybody in the neighborhood about the street-
I just want to get what we're paying for.
Yeah.
And it's not to clean the middle of the street.
Well, it's- It's to clean the entire street. In that light versus, oh, someone else must have stated, I'll say, hold on.
Mike Pucker, City Resident, put an order. This is about whether or not we're leasing, not whether or not we're going to add new orders. So it should be published on that.
Doesn't comment?
He's right. At a later point, we'll bring that to the schedule, stuff like that.
Yeah. Maybe publishing the schedule is a good idea. I don't know. Like I said, I can mow my dog, and he'll let me know whenever the street sweeper goes by.
I've got one of those. Trash diggers in the embalts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
I'll make a motion on staff recommendation to approve the sixty-month lease.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded as presented by staff. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote. City manager report. Mr. Schrader, can, do we need to do each one of these separately, or can we do them together?
If the council is agreeable, you can do them all together. Now, if anyone wants to pull one out and do it separately, you can do that.
All right.
I recommend you do them together.
Yes.
That helps. I think we should do them together.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. All three items are standard care for us. Greg asked me to handle this item in his absence. Anyway, these are the landscape lighting district, number one.
Can I stop you real quick? Will you open the hearing? Oh, sorry. Yes, I'm opening the hearing on items nine, ten, and eleven. Can we have any-
This was notice on May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and there was no correspondence received.
Thank you.
Might be a good one.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is to introduce the annual levy of assessments for landscape and lighting district number one, which is the citywide landscape and lighting district. It has subsections for various neighborhoods, but it's all one district. As well as item ten is drainage benefit assessment district number two thousand and fourteen dash one. And item eleven is drainage benefit assessment district number one for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So these three assessment districts make up our regular annual levy for the landscaping-specific neighborhoods, or in the case of the two drainage benefit districts, two specific drainage sets of facilities that the city manages specific for the benefit of a given neighborhood and the people that live there. I only wanted to distinguish, otherwise I'd be done with this issue, but I really want to distinguish for you guys and for the audience, this is not at all connected to the council's last discussion where we are studying the potential to modify these levies in order to close funding gaps. That study is still ongoing, is a separate effort. None of that is being presented. Now, this is instead the annual levy where, and so people's assessments are not changing other than by the rules of the assessment, which might include a minor CPI change, but are otherwise, these are their regular assessments. So there's no increase in taxes or anything of that nature going on. And so, of course, staff's recommendation, therefore, is that you, what is the specific recommendation?
Something.
I can get it.
Adopt a resolution.
Adopt two resolutions.
The annual engineer's report.
Yeah.
And the assessments.
For each of the three. So it is recommended that the City Council adopt two resolutions for each district, amending or approving the final engineer's report, which is just the updated report for each year, and then the city ordering the levy and collecting the assessments within. And then you fill in the blank, be it the landscape and lighting assessment district number one for eighteen nineteen, or the two drainage benefit districts listed in nine, is ten, and eleven. So hopefully, that clarifies the issue. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the public?
Mike Pucker, Tashby. We should undermine our CPI, that's consumer price index.
Yeah, it's not guaranteed. It depends on, some of the districts have a CPI built into them and some do not. But yes, that's consumer price index. Sorry.
So, is the address the amount collected based on whether or not that rose or fell?
Correct. Yes.
And do you know if it rose?
It rose. I think, yeah, you know, I thought you did, it's like three percent?
Yeah, a little over three percent.
So the CPI is three percent, then it would increase the amount that-
Not all of them. Again, and I don't want to go too far down radical, but these are created-
What's the CPI?
Okay. Okay.
Those are all area and then that's just the.
Okay, yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I can, most of them are CPI. One of them has a 5% per year raise. It, when these are initially created and voted upon by the property owner when they're created, there is an, there is an engineering report produced that lays out the detailed mathematics that go with what's being maintained, how much that costs to maintain it, and then how much each property is their fair share of the cost of that maintenance. Um, and then that very report also then lays out whether that, that amount of money will automatically change each year or whether it won't. Uh, that's all in those original reports. So when you purchase a house in that neighborhood or you purchase a business, some of these are business oriented as well, you receive those copies of those reports and that assessment documentation in your title information. Uh, so how that answers your, does that answer your question as to how we get here? And then how much?
And the how much, I guess. And my question is for like the drainage. I know the, or the origin, then there's a big, some of these would be called, or pit for water and all drain. And what specifically does the city do to maintain that? Is that what's seen and done?
That one isn't, isn't covered under the drainage main. These two drainage benefited assessment districts are industrial development areas of the city.
All right.
That's very nice. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? If not, I will close the public hearing on all three and I will.
What you are voting on, you're going to take on all three. Uh, all of them are approving the engineers report and the levy. And on the first one, they're also amending the engineers report. So just so you can understand that that's what you're doing. And when you say approve staff's recommendation, that's the recommendation.
Mr.?
Do you have a question? The public hearing is closed, please.
June Jacobs, you can buy, but the hearing is closed.
Can I take this comment or not?
Yeah, you can reopen it if the council wants to.
Reopen?
I think we should handle these one at a time because they're three public areas. I don't want a group of men that can have it convoluted. So if we can separate them, do it pleasingly. Thank you. It's up to you.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion on item nine, uh, under staff's recommendation and the recommended changes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item nine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Number 10?
Motion on, uh, number 10, and, uh, under staff's recommendation.
Have a second?
All say in the matter of the year.
Moved and seconded based on staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Number 11?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to present number 11 for as, uh, approval from the, I'm sorry.
We know what you mean.
Promotion to, uh, by staff recommendations for number 11.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Moved and seconded based on staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Thank you, sir. Um, number 12, agreement between the city and Datchby Police Officers Association.
Madam Mayor and, um, council members, it's, uh, my pleasure and honor tonight to present to you an agreement between the city of Datchby and the Datchby Police Officers Association. As the council is aware, on such number 14, 2016, the city entered into a labor agreement with the Datchby Police Officers Association. It represents city police officers and senior police officer positions. Term of that agreement was for three years, which expired on May 30th, 2019. Negotiations with department union representatives started in April and who after success to reach an intended agreement, the attached agreement, which we present to you as a supplement to the agenda was drafted for council approval. Much of the agreement remains the same from 2016, however, there are some, uh, substantial changes. First of all, the term of this agreement is for five years, which will expire June of 2024. Salary, in an effort to bring city police officer salary schedules in line with other agencies in our region, council recently approved a reduced staff salary scale from 15 steps to a five step system. You can see those steps below in the staff report of police officers and senior police officers. This is a physically responsible approach to the challenge of recruiting and retaining high quality officers to small agencies like our own. Many neighborhoods and neighborhood agencies have chosen just to throw money at this issue. We believe we took a more responsible stance with this agreement and MOU. The cities also agreed to provide a 3.6% cost of living adjustment for the 1920 fiscal year, which was also approved in the recent budget approval. For fiscal years 2020 to 2024, the city will provide the golden amount equal to our normal Los Angeles, Long Beach, and I CPI annual for the prior year. And we do have the option in that, the city has the rights. We look at this section of the agreement in the event it's facing unforeseen fiscal difficulties. There's also language in there pretty much standard from before with the chief's discretion with commendable or outstanding performance of our divisions. A minimum step increase to two and a half percent unless the employees already reach the top level of that classification. Uh, also the shift rotation that was changed as well at the request of both the city and the TPOA. Uh, we are changing it to a shift change every four months with bidding on those shifts based on seniority was have a random rotation before it was a scheduled rotation. Holiday pay also previous agreements allowed for officers who worked holidays and they were required to holidays to bank that time and receive it in a one-time payout. Um, and this new agreement, both the city and the, uh, association agree that to pay the employees with a holiday hours credit at their hourly rate of pay, the first paycheck immediately following that holiday. When it comes to health benefits and insurance, no substantial changes. The name of the Kaiser Consumer Driven Health Plan was changed, so that was noted in there as well. Also, the city, which we previously approved for other employees, will be providing TPOA down participating in the Viva Medical Expenses Program. And that currently is that sole cost of the member. There's no state contribution at this time. Also, uniform allowance, uh, an increase of $200 in the first year of this agreement and another 230 year of this agreement. And also after the, the passage and the, um, the start of SB 1421 with the effect of January 1st, 2019, uh, the city will give current police officers notice of records and requests made for his or her personnel file. Uh, fiscal impact here, the base scale step reductions were previously approved by council as part of the fiscal year budgets and, uh, as were the uniform allowance figures. So all those have already been put in the budget for the next five years. Uh, this MOU allows for fiscal responsibility, will also allow for growth in the department as needs arise and the budget allows. On the salary survey, which was conducted both by the city and the TPOA, now places TPD for them on starting pay in current county agencies. And now some includes the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. But we've always been very, um, competitive at the top end of the base scale. So now we're, um, the difficulty which everybody's having that has a police department is so bad recruiting new officers. We believe this will definitely help us sustain model for a small agency that we are very proud of, but also puts us above, uh, by about 5.5% starting pay salaries. Uh, the average, we have 5.5% of the average and 3% or 5.5% or so above the top end for police officers as well. So, um, and that's up the average. So we are, uh, we believe this puts us to be very competitive with surrounding agencies. Uh, like to thank officers Wayne Corning, Richard Kaiser, Gary Backenbush for their collaborative efforts with the city negotiating team. And also thanks to Chief Kenkra here for his vision for this department. And as a result, establishing the agency that officers want to work for and seek to approve. So stack recommendation to approve the agreement between the city of Datchby and Datchby Police Officers Association and office of mayor and city manager to sign. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience?
My partner, Tashby, what's the total cost of this agreement to the city? The total cost in terms of salary, I mean, have to, we have to, it's all in the budget that was approved in the, I don't know, the entire, whatever everybody's salary currently and all that at, at hand, but that is definitely, that is available, uh, from the budget. You can see what was approved for the salary schedule for the police department. But you.
Anna, can you address that?
So I do not have separately just for the police department, but citywide, including, uh, the new officers and with, um, MOU increase, we're looking at 360,000 increase next year.
So next year, but this is a five-year term, so we're talking?
No, that's for the citywide, so.
Citywide?
Yes, not, so I, now I have the figure just for the police department.
That sort of concerns me. I am a manager for a federal government facility and we have to make business-based decisions. We have to know the cost of what we're doing.
Now, this is a fairly solid business-based decision in a era where recruiting police officers and neighboring agencies are just throwing money they necessarily don't have at this issue.
It's exactly, sorry, that's all of that is. And on respect, we're even. I'm saying that we should know what the cost is. You guys are voting on ratifying an agreement and you don't have the total cost of the agreement and what's the cost to the city?
Yes, let me, please, let me clarify. We do know the cost. But I think what we're trying to say is, yeah, it doesn't have to be. The previously adopted budget in the last meeting anticipated this MOU. That budget is not going to be adjusted again. They made a decision already to approve a budget that encompasses this MOU. So it's there, it's available, I don't know if it's online yet. They just didn't bring the number off the top of their head. That's all I'm saying. You may contact the city or Anna's department to get the specific numbers. The life and numbers are known and have been approved and reviewed by the council already.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Carl Ger. I live in the city. Uh, as some of you might have attended, our police officers foundation, our foundation has approved some kind of vest sheet. Can you set for our police officers? And I wanted everybody to know if you didn't go to the foundation there. It's some new kind of, I got, I got that's a chief what it is, but it's, are they going to be maintained as new officers come on? Will they get the new vest? Okay, but anyway, whatever it is, it's supposed to stay alive.
I think we're kind of off topic, but if you want me to answer, I'd be.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, they're load-bearing vests, which removes a lot of the equipment from the belt to the vest, um, that prevents back injuries. It's a, a lot better, uh, better for our officers physically. And yes, we intend to equip the new officers in bed as well.
Thank you. Um, we've equipped them this.
I have a comment.
All right.
Uh, just a comment here, uh, the budget that we approved last time with the police officers in the entire city, uh, we have to bear in mind that one of our most critical obligations for our community is above and beyond the, uh, the services we provide is public safety. We do contract with the County Fire for that portion of it. But, uh, we have a very sound police department and it's in, it's within our budget. And a lot of cities and our, our police department is funded completely out of the general fund. Correct?
Correct.
Oh, I am out of time. My point is, uh, we try to stay under 50%, correct? Of the general fund for, uh, police services. And there are cities that go beyond that and they're in trouble and they're, and when they have problems with their finances, they have to lay off police officers. But in answer to the question, uh, are we making a sound business decision? Yes, we are. We only add it when we can afford an officer position. Uh, and we do it in a manner that keeps us under the 50% mark on the general fund. And if we can't afford it, we can't. But we don't want to create a position and then next year be in financial issues where we have to lay off people. And I think it's a very good, sound, uh, force that the people can be, uh, happy to have that you're receiving a very good service for, for what they pay. And that was the balancing act with this, this agreement was to find a way to responsibly go to department in the future and then also not give away the department at the same time. Uh, because just as council member Smith pointed out, we want to hire these people forever. We want them to work here and hopefully retire here. But so the plan is you want to be able to pay for them long-term. And so necessarily just throwing a lot of money at the bottom steps or throwing a lot of money at the top steps of the base scale, uh, isn't, doesn't accomplish that goal. So we think this accomplished that, uh, the union agreed and, uh, we were able to come to this, uh, this MOU.
Um, Ms. Chung, could you, um, bring that figure back at the next council meeting for us?
No problem.
Give a little report. Thank you very much. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it now, ma'am.
So it moved and seconded as presented by staff to approve this MOU. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Um, and does anyone have a report to the council from the city manager?
Yeah, I was actually not proposing to have any kind of report, but in light of tonight's events, I simply wanted to say something to you all. Uh, first of all, my office endeavors in all situations to be professional in the execution of our duties. Our duties do sometimes lead us to difficult moments where we're requiring folks who have not applied with the law to apply with the law. Uh, the accusation against me tonight is unfortunate. I would be happy to, uh, there were two witnesses in the room, one city employee in addition to myself and then two folks who came in for a meeting. Um, anyway, uh, I'd be happy to feel you guys in on the background associated with this issue. If you'd like to contact myself or bring it anytime, um, and I'd be happy to let you know the sequence of events that have led to this moment. So at least as the city, and I guess my only other regret is, uh, you know, with council member Eddy, my, my statement regarding a phone call is, is just born purely out of the belief that anyone who wants to make a rational decision would want to hear all sides of an issue before accusing somebody or siding with an accusation. So, uh, if that was disrespectful, I apologize to you all for my behavior, so thank you.
Um, council member reports?
Uh, nothing for me.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Parker, the amount for police, you wanted the overall?
Yeah.
It's, uh, 3,899,411. So approximately 3,900,000 is the.
No, that's the city one.
So, right. That's the budget for the.
That's the police department, but you were talking about the salary total, right?
He was no.
You just wanted to break down.
The salary difference between.
Part of the salary part.
The fiscal impact.
Okay. The overall budget was 3.9. There's a cost to every agreement.
Yes. And Mrs. Chung will present that at the next meeting. And I'm sorry that we didn't have that at our fingertips. Um, did you have any other?
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you. I've noticed we're getting a little bit of traffic and roadwork done with new painting and new signs.
I'm here.
Can you hear?
No, talk into your mic.
Um, I've noticed that we're getting a lot of new, um, road realignment of lines, I guess you would say, that we're painting them and it looks good. On the way over, I saw several new stop signs with a line in front. Also, um, I was looking in the budget from last meeting for those figures and I know they're in there because I read them.
Yes.
So they are published and they were published, so, Mr., my fault.
Okay, and, and I would just like to say to those of you who faithfully attend this meeting every two weeks, thank you and thank you for your professionalism.
Yes.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, the motion to adjourn is moved.
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0.